Jason, we got anybody signed up? Okay. We'll file the meeting order at one o'clock Tuesday, December seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen, regular city council meeting, the special city council meeting, I guess as we moved it up. Anyway, let's all stand for the invocation of the pledge.
Father, we gather and give you thanks for this day, for the freedom we have to meet for the citizens present today, guidance and direction to be listened to, to make decisions in the best interest of the city of Jefferson, the largest portion of the city of the population of Jefferson City. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice our own.
We do have four of a five out of six, so welcome everybody, and I guess we'll go to the first commenters. He looks.
Thank you very much. Copy of what I'm saying for you. I've been to y'all before with this over the last several years. I provided most of this to council before, so I want to put it in a little different picture for you this time, maybe it'll hit home a little better. Consider that you buy and move, move into and live in a house for seven months. The city changes your water meter. Suddenly, you have little to no water pressure. City tells you it's your pipes. You explain all was good until the meter was changed. The city holds it's not their problem. They come and check your water pressure. It's at twenty-eight pounds, point pounds of pressure and eighteen pounds flow. Water flow is three quarters of a gallon a minute. None of this meets state minimum requirements per TCDQ. Your dishwasher goes out. Repair says it's, repairman says it's because of lack of water pressure or flow rate. City again says it's not their problem. They're going to replace the water and sewer lines next summer. That should resolve the issue and offers you a credit on your water bill until it's resolved. Your under counter ice maker goes out. Repair says it's a lack of water pressure and flow rate. City, not your problem, but they're going to replace the water and sewer lines next summer and that should resolve the issue. City promises you a two-inch water line all the way to your meter to help with the problem once they replace them. Hot water heater goes out. It's the hot water heater that supplies your master bedroom. You replace it with an energy efficient, minimum water pressure required, low-flow water option unit. You can't get any hot water. Repairman and warranty people tell you it's low water pressure and/or low water flow. City says it might be their problem, but they're still working on the water lines and to sit tight as they should be starting the work in your area next summer. Ice maker in the fridge goes out. Repair says it's lack of water pressure. City says not their problem, it's your pipes and your valves, but they're working on replacing it and should resolve the issue. You replace all the water valves in your house, all the shut-off valves. You check the pressure again. It's still twenty-eight and eighteen. Flow rate's still three quarters of a gallon. You call council members, at least the ones who'll take your call, the mayor and the city administrator. All tell you it's not the city's problem and that more, and that that's more pressure than most of the people in town have. They tell you to go buy a pump and a pressure system, which runs about fifteen hundred dollars plus installation. You get frustrated and dig up your water meter to find that when the city replaced your meter, they cramped your three-quarter each water line down to a quarter of an inch, thus damaging your property. City, there's also a device installed on it, which the city can't tell you what it is. Have no idea. City does, once they see all this, decide they'll come repair my side of the line. Pressure and flow do not change. City finally gets to working on your water lines, but to do so, you can't use your driveway for thirty to forty-five month days. Okay? City installs a new two-inch water line, but stops twenty-four inches before they get to your meter and put it back to a one-inch line. Pressure gets better, flow rate doesn't change.
I hate to interrupt, but public comments are limited to three minutes. It's been three minutes.
I have three minutes coming, so maybe you should have. Just so, because we practice the same way.
Okay, alright, keep going.
The pressure gets better, but the flow rate doesn't change. The mayor steps in and cancels the credit the city's been supplying to you on your water meter. Contractor then breaks this water line, leaves water off for four hours instead of immediately fixing it. The fix was to install a coupling instead of replacing this twenty-four-inch, one-inch long, one-inch piece of pipe. Then, three to four days later, it rains and then freezes. The coupling breaks under the twenty-seven degree temperatures. It runs for several hours before being found. The contractor didn't want a repair to fix and left me without water for another two hours after the break was discovered. Contractor spent two days last week beating on the side of my house with an excavator, thinking back, think back though, knocked a hole in the wall. Contractor says, tough, I'm not responsible. Mayor tells me, city can't do anything, take it up with contractor. Yet, on another project, the mayor was able with the contractor to delay a project approved by council for over thirty days by calling them and interrupting them. Finally, I go and file a police report on deck property damage. The contractor then suddenly agrees or promises the officer that he'll repair the damage, repaint, power wash, et cetera. We'll see if that happens. Contractor breaks a gas line next day for the second time. Gas is allowed to run unimpeded for forty minutes until the police are notified by me. They call CenterPoint. CenterPoint arrives within ten, fifteen minutes, stops the leak. During the wait, gas spills up my building. No one ever notified. Contractor never notified anybody about it. Now, all of this seems comical to a degree, until you really put a timeout on it. The city swapped my water meter in two thousand and fifteen. This is four years later, and we're still dealing with it. You know, if I hadn't been able, you know, the master bathroom, I haven't used for three and a half years. I don't have any hot water in it. You know, as I'd want a cold shower. You know, as of seven o'clock today, this morning, the city supplies me fifty-eight pounds of water pressure? Great. Continual flow rate, however, is point seven-six-nine gallons per minute. The state requires minimums of one and a half gallons per minute of water flow. And I need to know what you're gonna do. I mean, I'm tired. I'm tired of fighting water. I'm tired of being screamed at. I'm tired of waiting. The two-inch water line they are installing right now, concrete that they're about to cover it up with, they don't have the meter all the way, the line all the way to my house yet. Can't get a response.
They're gonna, the engineers are gonna look at it tomorrow. Alright, next one. This will rain.
My son is the hardest that this grows. Um, I don't know, and at this point, I don't know where our problem is. I've talked to my landlord and we called a plumber, but y'all, when they dug, when they started digging in front of that red building back there, y'all, I have poop in my bathroom floor this deep. It is nasty and it stinks and the, the gas, sewer gases Saturday, it sounded, I had, I told my son, get up, get out. I thought someone was gonna explode. It was just a booming sound and then the smell. And I called Bubba, he did react. We had people come, the owl came and blew it out. It's, it's not any better. And I mean, we've called a plumber, but this started when the, the digging there started. And I went, this morning, I went to the people around me, and there's two of the other buildings there that have that smell, that the smell is yuck. Well, you know, and one of them, you know, Jeremy's beauty shop, I go to the beauty shop, I don't want to smell poop. And when I go in to buy something, you know, I sell used furniture. I can't have furniture in there, so you don't want to face up in your house, it smells like poop. And, and I, I have to look at that. It's gross. It's literally bubbling over. I have a waterfall of poo. And I bet, you know, where is it coming from and how is that coming? I just, I can't have this. And I just wanted to make my voice heard because it's not just me. So it makes me wonder where is it coming from? And I talked to one of the other businessmen, and he said that he had a problem several weeks back, and the blockage was way far from him. And they blew, just kept going down the lines until they found it. So, just help. Just, just help, because it's stinky at one-twenty West Lafayette.
And that's politely?
Yeah.
Real politely.
It's stinky. Okay. Thank you.
Alright, time for line five, consent agenda. Everybody got a chance to read over everything and go, here, motion to accept, consent agenda is presented.
Move for approval.
Alright, go, or second? Second by big. Any questions? All in favor? Five over. Alright. Consider approve appointment of interim chief of police position. Is there any discussion beforehand? Alright.
Um, I'm concerned. So out of all the, the others that we have in that police department, this was our final decision as far as who was gonna take the place, even though it's just for interim? Like it has to be this person, like you can't recommend anybody, like, and forgive me, there might be rules and stuff I'm supposed to know, but I'm just, I'm just not concerned, and I feel like there might be other people that might be able, either that's just for interim and it's only temporary, um, that might protect the position as well.
Well, the only, uh, thought about that is that, you know, Jason's sergeant the next one day, and the, the highest ranked member of who's left, and it was just to name an interim until we can come back and have a full.
How long?
I'm hoping it'll be next month. You know, it's regular council meeting next month, that's what I'm, and then we can say. And that'd be y'all's decision at that point.
I was just curious.
No, it's fine. Alright, do I, do I hear a motion to appoint Sergeant Carroll as interim chief of police and settle who leaves the next council meeting? Alright, have a motion made and seconded. Alright, is there any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? It's four of them. Alright, on the, consider approve removal of storage buildings that do not comply with ordinance under buildings and building regulations. Alright, what brought this to the front was basically Mr. Clamp put two buildings basically right in front of his house on, on Whitehead Street. That is certainly not the only instance of somebody having something in front of their house. We also have one that I didn't know about till I was told about it, because I don't go down that street very much, and it's one of our employees, Albert Taylor. And then, by far, this is, I'm not just picking on those two, there are several others in town that do not comply with the section eighteen and the section one oh two ordinances. And so, what, I guess this is all therefore, what I'm gonna recommend was to ask the police department to put those on notice, plus the others we see, that they have until January thirty-first, to move them or come to the city council meeting and ask a variance for their particular situation. Now, if y'all got other ideas, you know, it's just, what's happened is, it is getting to be epidemic where we live, and they're bringing portable buildings in and just putting willy-nilly everywhere. I don't like this, having to, I, I don't know, tell them where, where to put the buildings and stuff like that. I think it's, I like it for not telling them what to do, but at the same time, it's getting to be a mess, and it's getting worse. And, you know, whenever this, there's some people who bought Jeff Frantangelo's house and lot, they moved four buildings up there on Jeff's lot, and that Texas street is not, where the road is, is not really where it's supposed to be. So there's a lot line problems there and all that. They didn't get a permit before he brought them in there. I understand they're gonna try to do some commercial enterprise there, like renting those out for B to B type thing, so. Anyway, what's the council's pleasure on that?
I think the reason it's gotten so bad is because we set ordinances for the benefit of the city. We set fairly good ones, but they're never enforced. If they're never enforced, then we're wasting our time. And you're exactly right, I've driven around, it's only gonna get a whole lot worse. If there are no consequences, people are gonna do whatever they want to do. And, and I just don't think that, as a city, we want our city full of portable buildings in people's front yards. You know, there's other places that they can put them or hide, or put them in the back, do something. But no, I, I think it's time to enforce it, and if you give the police department the authority to enforce it, then that's the way it should have been in the first place.
I know we've made a local effort to go around and talk to the portable building movers in the area, and let them know that it's not acceptable, we've been able to do this anymore, but, you know, as I stated to you the other day, we've got to start somewhere. And, you know, the ordinance is the ordinance, and, you know, it's certainly hurting the homeowners in the area where, where this is taking place. So, you know, we, I don't know if January thirty-first is a good deadline or not, I mean, if it works, it works, but we, you know, we need to make sure that you get everybody identified, you know, and, and make, make sure you do your best not to miss anybody. I'm all for, you know, problems, line in the sand and, and enforcement, because it is, it's getting worse for the day.
Anybody else got anything? You have anybody?
I agree with that one, for sure. I drive by every day and I did these decorating and stuff, so.
I'm happy, abstaining from that, because I'd be one enforcing those when it comes from city councils, city court. We got the ordinance on those when they deal with.
Chief, can you speak to that a little bit, in terms of what it stands for? What ultimately have to deal with?
Yes, sir. We have no problem with, with enforcing it, we just weren't quite sure what this council's choice was. I have twenty-six that I have already gone by and counted some of these, these buildings that, that are problems and everything. There's two that I know of in town, they're used as dwellings, and we haven't addressed that yet, and that's something the council is gonna have to give me directions on, what they want to do, because it's multiple years that they've been there. So I, I don't know what you want to do, but I have to know, as far as the, the enforcement of the, the building, the portable buildings and everything, that's not a problem. It's classy, Mr. Middle, Mr. Fenstrom, and the city judges can handle that, release your citations, give us, just give us some, some backing, give, put some teeth in this thing, where we can have these things moved if we have to, and let's go forward with it, just real simply. If we're gonna do it, let's do it, let's don't stop for middle.
This is not very thorough meeting, I have the license I've been on, on, you know, that, we talked about it over and over and over, and I'm like, at what point do you say, okay, this is it? You gotta do something.
Yeah, and I think that's what we need to do, and this is the only way to solve it. Talking about it's not gonna help, let's get it done. And I'll start wherever, you know, just let me, just say yes, do it, and then we'll get it done, and I'll start. It doesn't have to be on any certain street, just wherever we need to go, that's where I'll go, and that's what we'll start doing.
Do these people that move in these buildings, do they have plumbing?
Sure.
Some have plumbing, some don't though.
Only ones I know do have plumbing. But...
But they're not a house, they're built, they're portable built.
Yes, ma'am, but see, the problem is, council granted a portable building to be living, dwelling on that north alley street, and what are we gonna do? You know, what, what's good for one is good for all, what's bad for one is bad for all. And I know the council didn't realize that this was a portable building, because it wasn't presented as the, but, you know, whatever we need to do, we need to have someone inspect these buildings, which I'm more than willing to do. I'm more than willing to do, yeah, come back to council, say, no, this is a portable building, it doesn't meet the standards that, that the code has, and we should not grant this, but then the decision is up to y'all.
When, I don't remember how, how was that presented to us, that we let that, was it, did they apply with the building permit or?
This was, Victor, do you remember who it was? Mr. Lomond?
Oh, Mr. Lomond upon Alley, Alley, Whitehead Street, corner of Alley and Whitehead.
Right, so if, if we, if we allow him, then I guess we have to allow everyone else, because rights were right, wrong was wrong, and I, I don't know whether we can change this or not at this point in time, but that's what the council has to give us directions to do. Police department will do it. We know how to do it, we know what to do. I'm more than willing to go and get in there and, and get this stuff done. We give them notifications, give them ten days notification, twenty days, whatever, just let me decide on what, how many days we have to do this, and then we'll issue a citation, they'll come to council, and we'll take care of that portion of it, correct, and then we'll go from there. If it comes down to they won't comply, then it has to be moved. We have to get a court order, and we have to move it, correct?
Well, you have to give them notice.
Yes, but then, at the end, we have to give a court order, we have to get an order if they won't comply. We can't just go move it.
I think you can give them enough notice and go move it, but I have to.
Well, I, I didn't think so. He's probably right, I love him. But I'm ready. All you gotta do is tell us what to do, police department's ready to do what you wish.
Now, the ones that were, somebody's actually lived in, I'd like to see us those a little bit further. I don't think we could go willy-nilly and try to get somebody out of the residence council. Not everybody's as fortunate as the next person.
This is true. Sir, let's do this, I'm more concerned about those portable builders that's coming to town, you know, and this, I mean, I, I, does the, does the ordinance, I know it's a little
vague, but they're not required to get a permit to bring those buildings in.
Well, of buildings, really, you spoke to have moved or anything else, but you spoke to have a person.
This is what I've done, Mr. Westbrook, I've written everyone a notification that sells these portable buildings, that they're gonna be required to get a permit before they can move this, these buildings into the city of Jefferson. Now, there's no fee to that permit, but they're gonna have to get a permit. Christie's been notified to, they will bring it to Christie, Christie will start filing it, that way everyone will know, y'all, all of you are welcome to come and look at the permit, file and everything, see what we're doing. This is, that's just the way to get it started, and then we'll critique it as it goes on, if this is your wish.
Very strong in trying to protect adjacent landowners.
Yes, sir.
Existing residents.
Yes, sir.
They're not here speaking for themselves, so I want to speak for them, you know? Just because they're not outspoken doesn't need to be, I mean, they don't need to be taken care of, you know? It's just, I know some of them have been there a long time, you know, and maybe there's some of them, it's a safety factor. Maybe they're blocking line of sight when they're going down the street, you know, so...
Yes, sir.
Again, Mr. Westbrook, I've talked to several of the residents, they, they don't want these buildings. Many of them don't care, many of them don't want these buildings in the front. Also, it's a fire hazard. If you're a firefighter, you know, if you can't get into that building, you can't, you can't fight that fire. We need to approach it in that way. We need to consider everything before we start doing something, but the thing is, we have to start doing something rather than just talk about it. Just make a decision, and it, there's nothing that can't be corrected. A lot of people may not want to speak natively about their adjacent landowner.
Yes, sir.
Because they may be friends.
Yes, sir.
But it's our responsibility as a city council to take these ordinances, some of them, and most of them have written like in two thousand two, because I read everything about them. And some of them are vague, need to be rewritten, but most of them are pretty, pretty, I agree with almost every one of them, so we need to, we're gonna have them, we need them enforced. Okay? That's all I need to tell you.
Anybody else have anything?
You know, it's not just this ordinance either, it's all the ordinances. Right. You know, we don't need to second guess ourselves, they're on the books, we need to enforce everything we've got.
Yes, sir.
If they got a problem, they can go to the city council and ask repairmen, or something like that. So, anyway, do I hear a motion to authorize the police department, this is kind of a convenient thing here, to authorize the police department to enforce the city ordinances relating to the building permit and the sections one oh, eighteen and one oh two as far as the building codes go.
So moved.
Here, second?
So?
Motion by Kay, second, by Victor. Any other discussion?
I do think that at some point, though, we need to put it on the agenda, we need to talk about it, that if there is an ordinance, and if it needs to be enforced, not just this one, but like Victor says, like David said, all the ordinances. The police department needs to have the authority to enforce those ordinances. They're on the books, just enforce them. I mean, we shouldn't, we shouldn't even have to vote.
We shouldn't have to. Basically, I mean, it's an ordinance, they, you know, they're...
Enforce it.
But, but in, in all fairness to the police department, is that, you know, when politics gets involved, and, you know, it's okay for one, not okay for something else, it puts them in a spot, you know? And I'm trying to keep them out of the spot, but we need to enforce what we've got, and that's one reason why I was bringing it up here. I mean, in theory, we really don't need to, but they already have authority to do this, but I was wanting to try to, you know, say, yes, we're gonna stand behind y'all if y'all do this.
I think we need to stand behind the police department, period.
Right.
If there's an ordinance, and they have to enforce it, and I don't care which one it is, we need to stand behind them a hundred percent as a council and say, you're doing your job. If the people that they're enforcing it against don't like it, then they need to come to the city council and explain to us what, what their problem is with it. We're certainly willing to listen to anything. But I think, to some degree, we've, the police department feels like their hands are tied, because it does get political, and it does get ugly, and that's not what any of us want, but that we need to enforce these things.
And truthfully, as Mr. Westbrook said, neighbors and friends and all this, they don't like it, they are the silent people, it's our job to do that and, and keep them out of this.
Right.
Just enforce it. All we have to do is just say, y'all go do it. And I'm not saying we're gonna be going in like a stopper or anything, we're gonna treat people right. We always have and we always will, you know? Take care of each other is one of the things. Yes, sir. You know, we, we have more to consider than just that particular thing, you know, again, you got the property, you got whether there's, there's, well, you know what I'm talking about, I don't have to say it. I'm ready when y'all are ready.
Alright, I have a motion made and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion? All were for, any against, and then one abstained. Alright?
I have something to say.
Okay.
So we spent a whole lot of time on this building situation, but I am so not comfortable with what we have downtown with the sewer thing. I'm not. And all these people sitting here, and then the audience are here for the same reason. At what point is enough? Like enough isn't enough, like what, what are we supposed to do from here? It's like, I know that you said the engineers coming tomorrow, but what's the end of it? Because, and I've called almost every day, and I don't know that any of y'all noticed, but they almost ran over a lady in front of Marshall Line last week. He was mad, he was cussing, they were all cussing, it was a disaster. But these little things, like that add up for a new joint, like, you know, if it's a hot water heater or whatever that needs to be replaced, they've dealt with it all these years. But just in the past, I'm gonna say, two months, all these issues that have come up, they are not professional whatsoever, but when they almost run over that lady and dropped every word possible, I'm talking about awful language, and my employees are standing out there, that woman's lying, and their unprofessionalism is gonna cost us a lot more money than a hot water heater or somebody coming in to buy some food from the rest. than a hot water heater or somebody coming in to buy some food from the range or even the people that come in our salon and we can't breathe and are literally eyes watering. That woman's life is going to cost us a lot more money if she were to get killed that day. And I know at this point, it's kind of like, oh, well, somebody else is going to handle it or we've got one more week or, you know, something. They're going to get finished with that alley. But it's one disaster after another. And I don't really know what the engineer coming to look at anything at this point is going to do anything. And, you know, I've asked the police department a couple of days ago when Bell Street was closed off in the middle, there were tour buses, church buses coming and literally having three, coming three quarters of the way down and flying back, like past Lafayette. Like we're coming through Bell Stop Sign, running into Lafayette Street, all because we couldn't simply put a roadblock up since they wouldn't do it. We could have done it. Emergency type situation, but nobody did anything then either. And like I'm watching every day as these things happen and I'm taking notes and I'm calling people and nobody steps in to do anything. Nobody came after I made the call and said, "This church van just literally ran the stop sign as they were reversing the wrong direction." Nobody came. Nobody closed that road to help, even to help them out. Like I'm willing to help these construction guys out before they do hurt somebody or kill somebody. But none of us did anything. Nobody, you know? I mean, can somebody with some higher authority come out there and say, "Your boss isn't going to do it. We're going to help you." I know one of my client's fathers came out of their house the other day in their own gear, water protecting gear, their own tools, and jumped in that hole with that man that was working down there because he didn't have the right tool and he didn't know what he was doing. And our person that lives here is in real estate, got his own gear and equipment and went there and got in that hole and helped him because it turned water back on to his daughter's house. And I just don't know how we can say it's going to be okay. We're almost done when our businesses are suffering just as much downtown. And nobody has really done anything or said anything.
Is Jeremy supposed to supervise these guys? Who's supervisor?
Jeremy. That's what we said the last week.
Right.
And he said, and like, oh, my goodness.
He said he was going to handle the guys, but as of course, he didn't.
He's not.
Well, in town, he has a representative here that's supposed to be on site most of the time.
Well, and if it's this new guy that was out there the other day, um, I can tell you, he cranked in his mirror for about twenty minutes in front of our salon with his beard above. And that's, I believe that's the same day that that woman almost got run over. So either Jeremy needs to be here and purge there or we need to get somebody else out there. I don't know who it is. I don't know what the answer is and I know I need to quit wrangling at this point. We have a big problems.
I think Jeremy needs to be informed right away because he was very receptive last time, but he said he was going to handle this and get these guys to straighten up. And apparently, I don't know who the representative is, but what does the representative do? Does he just stand around?
Well, he's supposed to come in and make sure the job is supported and inspected. That's what he's supposed to do. Before they cover it up and everything like that, because it's an ongoing thing.
There's no one back there. No one with them. In charge of how these guys behave or what they do or how they conduct their business daily? The representative, whoever that is.
Well, you know, I don't know what his full responsibility is. You would think, you'd think that he's watching for the engineer. You would think that was what they do, you know?
And at this point, I'm like, I really wish there was an easier way to say, "Well, you know, I've done enough damage at this point. Let's wrap it up and close it out and move on to somebody else that might come in and finish the job." That's kind of what I feel like. Because I know y'all aren't all walking around downtown where we're having to deal with them every single day. I don't know that we could have a more unprofessional crew than these people, right?
Well, Rain, you still stopped up.
Yes, and the thing, you know, on that, we were blocked, that parking back there, I was blocked in there four hours too easily.
And we are too.
Because there's, you can't get out.
That there were an emergency, I'm going to tell you, and you're in a car, or there was a fire or medical emergency. There are some days, there is no way to get out. They're working. They've got equipment running everywhere. And they've got the hole where you normally turn in by the antique brackley side skinner. Sometimes that's blocked all the way to the end, so you, you're stuck. But if someone were hurt or there was, there's no way for someone to get in there. And you're just sitting there. One day even Center Point had all their trucks lined up at that entrance. So anyone that was in there, basically, you're stuck in there. But all I keep thinking is, you know, for the city or for someone, if they were sick or hurt or you needed to get out, you really can't. I mean, I respect Jeremy a lot and I like him very much, but when we accepted the bid, the, out of the bids, to do this job, he assured us that we were picking the right people to do it. I'm not blaming him, but I think he needs to be notified and made aware of all these people's problems of what's going on. Because if the man doesn't know, if he's not informed, does he know? Have you talked to him?
Well, and that's what I, that was my concern the other day when I called and asked a question was, with all these mistakes that are well let in and they say that we're over budget already, well, we know that we've seen these people dig up the same hole three times. So I know that somebody's paying for them to dig up that hole three times. And if they're going to invoice whoever it is they invoice, are they saying, "We messed up three times and we had to dig this hole, so Jefferson's going to have to pay for it because we're not capable of doing our job?"
And I've notified Jeremy directly via email and never heard a word, yes ma'am, and never heard a word from him. No, ma'am, he did not.
I'm not only agenda, but is Jefferson agreeing because of things that, a change order or anything, paid attention?
That was my question. That was my question.
And if you have damage, you just kind of feel like, okay, you're telling me, tell the mayor, you're telling me to tell this person, tell that person, tell Lawler. You feel like you're getting a runaround. I didn't have anything to do with the contract you did with Lawler or the bids you accepted. All I know is I got damaged that nobody wants to admit up to and everybody's passing the buck on. And I've lived three and a half years without the water pressure the state requires of you. I've been real patient. But the patience is thin when you walk out there and you find a hole in your building.
And we're paying, we're paying SPI three or four hundred thousand dollars for their partners' project. Their engineers, but they are the supervisors.
They should be here.
They are the people that are supposed to be handling Lawler. I mean, Lawler, you know, comes to us, I know, to ask us about, you know, do we have knowledge of where the line is already? You know, so they're not cutting. But Jeremy and SPI is ultimately responsible for overseeing this job.
But they're not listening anyway. They didn't know with their own, they put a line in and two days later hit it. And had to redo it.
Their own line.
Their own line. It was the line they put in. And they hit it and had to re-dig the trench, redo it. Are we paying for all their re-digs every time they hit their own line?
Sure, George. I was just getting ready to ask and I asked it earlier, does anybody know about change orders that they've been signed off on? I've heard it was like they're way over budget. They were complaining about putting concrete and everything like that.
No, it has to do, it has to do, it's built into the contract where it's kind of like, whenever they did the line in the corner of Lafayette Walnut Street, they cut my business before the business is off the water for four days.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. But they did not know that the line that they were replacing had a line running up Lafayette Street to the alley that goes between my building and Jim Meyer's building. So they were not aware of that. So it's built into the contract that the engineer didn't identify something. And if they have to do something like that, then they can charge us for it. It's within the scope of the contract. Change orders, I think maybe we've done one or two change orders because it was things that we wanted done that were not seen. But like what you're talking about, no, they're not charging us.
I mean, I can see, I don't know what it was around the rest of the city, but if Bateman's Alley is any indication, y'all got charged for a lot of rework from them hitting their own stuff, no supervisor being there. This last week, there were two guys. One guy I'd never seen before. Another guy I don't think speaks English. They were in charge of themselves all day.
Yeah. That's how that building got beat up.
That's how we had it. That's how they ended up hitting our water line they just put in and had an overnight leak. That's how you had all those blue poles in the alley that they closed up for the weekend and then cars started hitting them. I could stand in my window in my bedroom and watch as people were hitting those things.
Well, this just...
And they had to redo. They had to come in and they'd come in and they'd look at all of it like, who hit all this? People hit it. We have tourists here every, every weekend and they have to redo all that work.
That water is so bad from the smell.
So imagine all around town this was happening and nobody lives right there.
Let me let Rain, she was about to answer a question a while ago.
Back in the alley, I see them back there. They, you know, I have, back there under, you know, while there's all this stuff, there's chairs. They'll pull those chairs out. They sit out there and smoke, take selfies, text. They're not, they're, they'll be sitting on their equipment. That is not what we're paying and they're not, they're paying for it. And they get that hole out and the others are waiting. They work in there a few hours and then they fill the hole back. And it's, it's constant every day. Dig, work a little bit, fill in. And it's like, why don't you, why don't you just dig it and work on it and then fill it back in and be done?
Bottom line, there's daylight at the end of the tunnel because they're forming up and they're saying they're pouring tomorrow.
They're pouring tomorrow. That's what he said.
Yeah.
And we're not there.
I know.
They're pouring it tomorrow. Are they sure?
It looks like it.
Yeah.
Before they pour it.
Not been inspected.
Not been inspected. And I mean, I still don't, I still have water issues.
And unless they pulled a density test on the ground this morning, they haven't done that either.
It still has issues.
I just think Jeremy needs to be aware of all, somebody should get out.
I told him this morning that they're, they're doing a ditch and things out there checking.
Okay.
I asked him that specific question about that.
Good.
I've asked him specific questions about why they're putting a manhole in this area through there. You know, you've got six hundred plus feet through this area and he told me what they're doing there and stuff like that. I have questions about it. I've talked to him about it. So I'm sure I do.
I think here's the point. Rain has still stopped up and we know we've got, we should have.
I mean, it is so bad. It has been bad in our, in the shop several times, but I've been patient and, because I'm, you know, I'm selling over and then council later. But when we can't do work in there because it's so, I'm coming out, this smell is, you can't drain your ass water. I don't want my clients trying to sit there and then for me to have to run water and deal with that again. I mean, we're struggling downtown in some distances as it is. And the ones of us that are trying to keep afloat and work, it can't work because it smells so bad. If they say to finish with this, am I going to have to smell that every single day?
Well, I'll go talk to them after this is over. And as far as I know, all that was taken care of, they're taking care of it as they're doing it. A lot of stuff, you know, I'm not told about, you know, on regular basis, you know, and stuff like that. And you assume it's being fixed once you talk to somebody about it, you know.
Were you saying that they were going to pay him tomorrow?
That's, I guess that's not...
But we need to hope out of that until we get to...
Well, Rain said Thursday.
Thursday.
But he's got, they're going to come in and do some checking and watering and stuff like that tomorrow. Anyway.
Surely don't let them pave over something that's not finished.
I mean...
Well, right, right.
Business owners cannot have these smells in their business.
Especially for concrete, though. It's just going to cost way more money to dig their, dig their crack.
Can I hand this out here real quick, real short? You can read it?
This is what I endured. I would have been here on time, but I was supervising my help cleaning up the last sewer backup that we had yesterday.
I heard there was a rag in the flat.
Yeah, and Mr. Lawler tried to blame it on some of my drunk customers from Saturday night. But what he doesn't know is that sewer line that was backed up only serves the restroom in my office only.
All right, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Let me say something.
All right.
Excuse you, Vic, but it looks like here in the next couple of days, we need to get Alan and the engineer to go to each one of these businesses that this alley pertains to and see what their individual problems are factually. Try to address them one by one, if that's what it takes, before we pave anything over. And then maybe they can solve some of these problems.
And they need to see for themselves what the problems are, or Jeremy needs to see for himself what the problems are. Because you can't, you can't cover it up.
Right.
And expect it to go away because it's not going to go away.
And then dig it back out.
Now, if it's a traffic problem, we need to refer that to our police department. Let them get involved in what needs to be barricaded off, what needs to be moved, direct traffic, whatever it needs. Let them handle that for them. But the engineering, the plumbing, the drainage lines of water, the sewer line, I need to get Alan and...
That's the construction government's responsibility, right, to cordon off a construction...
It's their responsibility. That's our engineer's ultimate responsibility.
Yeah, I mean, I put the barricade, I had the barricades put up on Polk Street crossing Bateman's Alley. Because I left it open and I almost watched the lady faceplant.
With anything that concerns traffic in the city, we need to refer that to our police department. Let them have...
Well, then we got to actually proceed with that because, like, I was okay and felt safe knowing that I could be out there and watch. But once I made the call and then there was nothing there and I checked an hour later and that's when the vans and churches and stuff were coming in and I'm like, what are you doing? Nobody's made any step on moving forward to that for their safety and I'm like, at some point, maybe something.
I just talked to Mr. Arden about this and it wasn't reported why there wasn't a barricade put there. I can't tell you. I have no idea. But I would say this, if you can let us know where there's a problem. If it's someone that's, that's creating a havoc with, with your people or anything, anyone that's disarming, we'll certainly handle that. And we will work with the barricade problem. We may have been missing this one thing, but if it won't happen again, I promise you that. As far as your police department is concerned, we'll make sure that there's a barricade put.
We just need access to barricades.
Yes.
I mean, I want a very good barricade, but I don't go out there and wave and...
We'll do that for you if you just let us know.
I mean, and I know I'd ask Alan, when they started the work a month and a half ago on Bateman's Alley, to barricade off those so people wouldn't drive through it.
See, the worst thing back there is, you know, we have to have dumpsters. I mean, we have to have... But they've moved that one and people, I guess because they're, oh, my gosh, look, that's a place to park. So they park right there by it. So that person that parks right there blocks everybody in there. And that's scary.
It's a disaster.
I didn't, I didn't move that dumpster. Lawler moved that dumpster and placed it where it was, which was completely inappropriate. And when they did that, they also destroyed the dumpster and I had to pay to have the dumpster replaced.
I think I agree with those. Jeremy needs to go to each business, discuss with them what their problems have been and what he can do to fix it because this is just getting completely out of hand. And I feel for these businesses, you know, it's hard enough to have a business here in town, in a very small town. But it's doubly hard when you've got these fools causing all these problems. It's, I just think it's unacceptable considering the amount of money that we are paying to get this done. I think Jeremy needs to answer for this or whoever he works for. I don't care, but somebody needs to handle this. Some of them, not us. We're not work groups. I mean, we can't go out there and fix it. But we, these people can certainly go to each business owner, Rain, Terry, whoever, and any business owner and say, "I, you know, we're really sorry. Tell us what has happened. Tell us what you need. We need to know." And if these guys are behaving poorly, then Jeremy or whoever's in charge of Jeremy needs to fire them and find people that do know what they're doing. That is not, we're not paying for incompetence. Well, I think we're paying for incompetence right now. But we certainly don't need to be paying for incompetence. And I've even driven by a few times the park. Well, what are they doing? I'm not an expert, but you don't need one guy in the hole and two guys on top going, "I don't know. I, I don't know what that is." And that's just personal observance.
And Bubba brought this up the other day that what he, one of his fears is, is that, you know, Lawler has several jobs going on around the area and he has sent in his third and fourth squad instead of his first and second squad.
He does work like this everywhere. I don't know how he's...
Absolutely. And I think we didn't need to demand that his first or second squad come in instead of his third and fourth. So I think that's one of the things we need to have. I mean, you're the one that observed that and brought that up the other day, so.
Well, it just bothers me that if my window's down and I can hear two guys looking down in the hole with the other guy going, "I don't know. I just don't know." Well, if you don't know, who does know?
It's very unsupervised. If they have it, then...
And I just think, you know, we're paying a lot of money to get this done. We need to work with these business owners. These business owners are why we have this town. That's why we have tourists. If they don't have good water and they don't have good service, then what are we here for?
I've had my gas lines broke three times, twice in the same spot. Center Point Energy told them, "Do not cover this up. This is a temporary fix." What did they do the next day? They covered it up. And the very next day, David Law...
And the very next day, David Lawler jumps into one of his heavy pieces of equipment and runs over it and causes the leak again. So whenever they're fixing it, I go after David Lawler, he comes climbing off the machine at me, uh, threatening to shut me up. Well, come on, fellas, we got no problem here, I will gladly take you on.
But this is all so unnecessary.
It is.
It's unnecessary, it's absurd, but why isn't a representative such as Alan Watley, which is very well qualified, knows where everything is, why isn't he not babysitting them through this process? Because that alley is so full of so many gas lines and water lines and God knows what else underneath there.
Mainly because it's Lawler's responsibility.
We're not paying. I get you, it is his responsibility, but he went digging whenever, okay, they came out, they sprayed for, for all the lines, they sprayed and put marks on all the ground where they, where all the lines were supposed to be, as many of them as they could find. Well, by the time Lawler got there, all those lines were washed away, he's digging blindly, and he's still digging blindly. That's where, that's where the level of incompetence starts to kick in for me. But anyway, thanks for your time.
Thank you very much, Ken. Uh, my, my other deal before we adjourn. Thank you, because it's, and I, and I hope that he will help me get this out. We're wanting to have a coming up party for our two retirees, the chief and Jerry, on Monday, the thirtieth.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Where and what time?
Uh, five to seven, uh, down at the transportation center.
Okay.
Okay.
I will post it then.
We want the public to come and say thanks to these two longtime employees of ours, so.
And what time did you say?
Five till seven, Monday the thirtieth.
Okay. Well, I think we, we owe these businesses, uh, I think we need to get this straightened out. I had no idea how bad it was, other than standing in a hole going, I don't know what's in that hole. Uh, I do think we need to take care of this, that's our job.
Well, I told, and I, and I, I experienced the same thing with my loss.
I know.
I told them why they still had the hole open, I said, guys, y'all cut my water off. I said, there's a line that runs down here to this alley that serves four businesses. Don't cover that hole up. Well, they came in on Sunday and completely patched that hole, they made it all pretty, and put the bricks back down.
This kind of incompetence is really making my head hurt, I just can't tolerate incompetence, which is what we're paying for at this point.
I mean, Kitten them didn't have water for two days, for the same reason, because they're fed off Bateman's Alley.
Yep.
No, I, I think we need to get this straightened out.
Go, Jerry. Mayor second? Mayor second to the jury, discussion, all in favor, five votes.